Okay, let's go ahead and get the ball rolling here. It looks like we're about 10 minutes late or so, but obviously you all know we've been having a few computer slowdowns, I guess, or whatever, so I think we're set to go now. I've also been told, I think I can announce, that everybody's gotta be out of here by 5 o'clock. That's according to the security folks.
Due to weather.
Due to weather, so no long-winded stories.
Three hours.
I don't know why I said that.
You set a timer?
Yeah. Just something about me, you know, I don't know. So, okay, we'll call the meeting of the Ames Community College Board of Directors to order, and the first order of business is to do the Pledge of Allegiance, so let's all join in.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands: one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, members, you've had an opportunity to look over the agenda for today, and is there any additions or corrections that need to be made?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the agenda as printed.
Thank you, Carol. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, both of you. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No, that is approved. Now we have a public comment.
Trustees and Dr. Bornstein, there are no public comments today.
Okay, thank you. Consent agenda, that too has been before you for a week or so now, had a chance to look it over. Is there any additions, corrections, or would you like to pull out any item for further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Carol. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. That motion is carried, so the consent agenda is approved. Now I have Representatives of Board and Student Government Association get started off.
Hi, everyone. I don't know if you can hear.
There you go.
Hi, everyone. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Happy Valentine's Day.
Oh, yeah, that too, yeah. Okay, so I'm gonna start. We have the QPR certification training coming up on February 20th and 21st. It's gonna be from, both of them are gonna be from 11:30 to 1:00 p.m. in at BD 143. QPR stands for Question Pursue and Refer, and it's a training that will be provided by a mental health specialist from North Range Behavioral Health, and it is to how to recognize early signs of suicide and also how to respond to it. This event is actually open to students, staff, and faculty, so anybody's welcome to attend. At the beginning of the semester, we at SGA decided to create a Welcome Back to Class It was, it has some study stuff, like school supplies, notebook, highlights, and the purpose of that was to welcome back the students so they can be motivated and prepared for the spring semester. I'll show it to you. And we made about, I think, 100 of them, and they were gone pretty quickly, so it was a success. We held our first SGA meeting, town hall meeting, last week on the 31st, and we had over 50 students who attended and participated. The goal of the, the purpose of the meeting was to get feedback from the new buildings, from students, and a lot of students were very excited, and they were very excited that they got to participate in the decision process of making some, you know, new stuff. And I think the most popular things that they were excited about is having different studying settings and also a game room, so they can socialize and interact with each other. Next, we have four members of SGA and CAP attending, along with Becca, attending the National Student Leadership and Diversity Conference in San Francisco, February 8th and 9th, and this conference is to help students become stronger leaders, empowering them to create a more accepted environment, as well as how to work effectively in a diverse place. We decided to go to this conference in particular because diversity and inclusion are part of our values, so we wanted to go there so we can become better leaders and learn how to be more inclusive. We had some SGA Executive Board meetings, highlights that we've been working on. In the last few meetings, we've been working on club funding requests and talking about starting town hall meetings on the satellite campuses, so other students also have the opportunity to attend. We also created a funding request policy for non-club organizations here on campus, so anyone, any organization here at Ames that would like to co-sponsor a student-related event, they can apply for the fund, so it's open to faculty and staff, so anybody who work here at Ames. And last, but not least, we had the MLK March in January, and a lot of people from the community came and supported it. We had a sign-making event the week before, and people who showed up to the event had great signs, and we also have, we had two students from the ASAC perform. They had like an event afterwards, and it was great, so that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good report.
Thank you.
Let's see, I guess we don't have a faculty association person here, right? Okay, so let's go to Staff Association. Amy?
Good snowy afternoon, Chairman Peterson, trustee members, Dr. B. For our January event with the Staff Association, we held a hot chocolate social on all campuses, and it was to promote networking and to kind of welcome everybody back from the winter break. So we received very positive feedback, both of the event and the hot chocolate, which was provided by the Human Bean, and I concur, because anything from Human Bean is delicious.
Yeah. Looks like.
As several of you know. We have a couple of staff accomplishments, conferences, and community involvement to update you on. Sandy Olson, she's Staff Executive in Admissions, Registration, and Records. She recently completed her Associate of Applied Sciences degree in Marketing Management and Business Management, so congratulations to her. Three staff from the Ames Financial Aid Office attended the annual Federal Student Aid Training Conference offered by the U.S. Department of Education on November 27th through 30th in Atlanta, Georgia. A highlight of the week included an announcement that the Department of Education would relax the requirement for students and their parents to submit tax transcripts from the IRS when selected for verification. This will make a big difference for many of our students who struggle to obtain the correct documents needed in order to receive their funds in a timely manner. Ongoing training is a necessity in financial aid to keep current with the many changes in processes and requirements. And then lastly, for community involvement, Leslie Bicknell, Program Director and Academic Advising, would like to say that she volunteers and serves on the board for the Greeley Transitional House. Greeley Transitional House is a nonprofit organization that provides temporary housing and support services to homeless families in Northern Colorado. It is the only shelter in Northern Colorado that specializes in helping families and allows parents to shelter together with their children, so we thank Leslie for volunteering. And lastly, I just have a couple of ripples in recognition that I wanted to read, and it's so hard to pick because they're always so nice to see the appreciation. The first one that I thought was wonderful was for Vicky Lovato, and this was nominated by Cinnamon Martinez, who is a student. "From the moment I met Vicky, I knew that I was talking to a person that wanted to help. I felt like she went out of her way numerous times to help me get back into the school process. Mind you, I haven't been to school since 2012, when I graduated. Now, anyone can help you with getting registered, but the way that Vicky did really made me realize that the professors and staff at Ames really do care about their students and their success. She did anything she could to make sure I wasn't struggling and called me every week to let me know the status of my financial aid. I think she deserves a nomination because she is such a generous and kind woman. I know I can go to her for anything I need." And the second one is for Brendan Quezenberry, and he's a library technician in the Learning Commons. He was nominated by Susan Anderson. "Congratulations to Brendan Quezenberry for completing the digital archiving of almost 50 years of Ames Community College President Office scrapbooks. This was a large undertaking, and the information contained in these files will be a valuable resource to students, alumni, and local historians for generations to come. Stop by the Greeley Learning Commons this spring semester to see some of the archived images on monitors throughout the space. While you're there, stop by the front desk to give Brendan a high five for completing this remarkable project."
Wow.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That'd be awesome.
You know, the reason why you have so much trouble or have so many good candidates is because everybody is so wonderful and so good, so. Okay. Dr. B. Sorry.
That's okay. President's report.
Forgot what I was gonna say there for a while. Right, President's report.
So I would like to ask Haley Howell and Eli McKee to approach the podium for our excellence at Ames. Haley will be introducing Eli, who is 2015 alum of Ames Community College.
Yes, good afternoon. I would like to introduce Eli McKee. He's a graduate of our aviation program, and he made the very snowy, cold, and treacherous journey up from Aurora today, so please give him a warm welcome.
Hey, thanks, Haley. Thanks, you guys, for having me, too, by the way. So I'll just kind of go over a little brief history, and I'll keep this short. They said about five minutes, so I started out.
It's okay, we'll be out here by 5:00.
I was born and raised in Fort Collins. Did most of my growing up there. I went to high school out in Kansas. After graduating high school, I immediately went into the Marines. I spent about a week not doing anything and then went into the Marines. So I served in the Marines for five years. Did three deployments with them, two on a boat, and one direct flight over to Afghanistan. After getting out of the Marines, I kind of sat around my house for about six months, just kind of cooling off and figuring myself out, and I found out about Ames through my dad, actually. My dad told me that back when he was younger, Ames had an aviation program, and I'd always wanted to learn how to fly. So I came down to Ames, and I cannot remember the guy's name that I talked to, but it was the VA rep at the time, and I asked, "Does Ames accept the GI Bill?" And he said, "Yes." And I was like, "Well, can I go do the pilot degree there at Ames with the GI Bill?" And he said, "Yes." I was so happy to hear this, because I didn't want to have to pay for it, because I don't know if you guys know this or not, but flying airplanes is pretty expensive, so.
We know.
So I didn't want to pay for it, and then I found out that Ames accepted my GI Bill. So I, he told me to go home and enroll, and I did exactly that that day, and I enrolled, and I started the fall semester of 2011. I started here at Ames for the professional pilot degree. Coming up through Ames, I never thought that I was good at math. I placed into some pretty poor math, and found out that it was kind of easy for me, and I had some awesome professors. Karen Robinson was fabulous. I absolutely love and adore Karen. Went through math, and I found out that math was pretty easy for me, and I had some GI Bill left, and as I was finishing up through Ames, I decided I'd tack on a little bit of extra math and some physics and stuff here, so I could transfer to CU Boulder and get my aerospace engineering degree. So I finished up here at Ames. I went to CU, got my aerospace engineering degree. While I was working at CU, I worked in the machine shop in the aerospace engineering department there, and I was also towing gliders there. I don't know if you guys have ever been down to Boulder and seen the little gliders flying around town, but I used to tow those things up there. After I finished at CU, I got a job at a company down in Centennial, Colorado called Key Lime, which is a great place to go start an aviation career if any of your young aviation students are looking for jobs. Key Lime Air down in Centennial, Colorado is a great place to go to start that. They hire young pilots with not a lot of time to go do, to fly jets and fly basketball teams and charters all around the country, which was a great place to go. So I worked at Key Lime for about a year. After I got the time that I needed to transition into the airlines, I moved over to Transstates Airlines, where I am currently a First Officer. Transstates Airlines flying the United Express routes out of Denver. As for Ames and its integral role in where I am today, Ames was probably the best place that I could have gone to start my college career, you know? The lessons that I got from Liz and the trio and with my studies and how to study and how to apply myself and what resources to use at the college were invaluable. They helped me out so much, especially in aerospace, because I'm not the, you guys might not believe this or anything, but I am not the brightest apple in the orchard, and it takes a lot of work for me to get through school, and coming here to Ames helped me out so much, just getting in the college mindset, getting out of the military mindset, and getting into a college mindset. And also the professors and the faculty and staff here at Ames are, bar none, the best out there. Mike Joyd, Sarah Burtwell, Karen Robinson, Gordon Hadlow, whom I hope you guys know, because he's a fantastic dude. And, you know, Haley sent me this list of things, all these questions and stuff that I should answer for this, and one of them was the funniest moment at Ames that I've ever had, and I would have to say that every time that I went into Gordon Hadlow's class was probably one of the funniest times that I've ever had. So I wish you were here right now, but, yeah, Gordon was awesome, and Ames helped me also as a person. When I first got out of the military, I didn't have a lot of friends around here, because they'd all moved on, so Ames helped me out in the social aspect of my life and how to become a more social person, and spend time with people in my class, faculty and staff. So Ames pretty much built the person that I am now, and they've got me to where I am now, and I cannot appreciate it more. And thank you, guys, for everything that you've done for me and all these guys back here. And that's about six minutes, but if you guys have any questions, I'd be more than willing to answer them for you guys.
I just think, congratulations. Wonderful story that is.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it, guys, and thanks for having me. I really appreciate you guys coming. I try. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Eli.
Yeah, thank you.
We love hearing our alumni stories and our student stories, because it helps remind us why we're all here, so thank you for helping to keep us focused.
Oh, no, thank you, guys. I wouldn't be here without you guys.
And vice versa, we wouldn't be here without you. So there we go.
That's right.
So there you go.
So there we go.
We're even now.
I would like to ask Dr. Rothmer, who's our Executive Vice President, to come up and give us updates from his area and a grants report.
You got a hard act to follow, you know?
I always do, following the excellence at Ames report. So, good afternoon, Chairman Peterson, members of the board, Dr. Bornstein, thank you very much for your time. In your packets, what I wanted to share with you today is a few highlights around the grants program, and it's the blue sheet that's in there, and since I was asked to leave my long-winded stories in the binder, and you know I'm very succinct anyways, I want to focus your attention in the bottom third of that page in terms of the highlights for the Spring 2019 previews. And the first one is a notice that the position of the grants manager was actually vacant for those six months, and I'd like to take this opportunity a little bit out of order and beg forgiveness from Dr. Bornstein, is I'd like to introduce Malone Miller, if you could please stand for us. Malone joined us on January 7th as a new grants manager. She's come to us after a 30-year career in international humanitarian relief and development, and she has extensive experience with grants administration, proposal development, and business development, including research funding opportunities. Malone and her family relocated to Loveland from Kenya in July, so if you could please unwelcome Malone to the team and the great job she's done. One of the things I want to highlight that we've asked her to do is to take a look at, really evaluating where we are with our grants programs, the grants that we have. Is it where we should be, and are we using them as we should, and are there opportunities that, as a community college and with our strategic plan, things we should be looking at and moving forward to? So that is one of the initial evaluations and recommendations that we're going to be looking forward to from Malone. In addition, a couple other things I wanted to highlight for you, and we've already talked a couple of times about, in a previous board meeting you had a presentation, but it's always nice highlighting those opportunities in which we look to make college more affordable for our students. So we've talked about the open educational resources, you had the presentation and video regarding that, and it's the $25,000 grant that we received from the state, so we're very much looking forward to supporting faculty and developing more of those free resources for students to make their classes more affordable. The last highlight from the grants area that I want to share with you is the $173,000-plus that we got as a subaward in working with the University of Northern Colorado on the Computational Thinking Industrial Automation program. And let me just share with you real briefly kind of what that means and what Ames' role is in that. And it's basically to encourage more diverse populations in high schools to consider careers in mechatronics and to better prepare students who enter a career path in partnering with one or more high schools in District 6, covering Greeley and Evans. So we will, as Ames, support the local development, assembly, and deployment of digital invention kits, and we will provide undergraduate student mentors to high school students who are interested in or considering pursuing a career in advanced manufacturing or industrial automation. So a great opportunity as we look at our strategic plan and partnering not only with our high schools, but also looking at the potential employment needs that are in the area and kind of matching all of those up, so this is a great opportunity for us. So with, yes, sir?
Russ, is that, are there classes that you'll teach, or is that just programs you'll introduce?
Basically, it's putting mentors with those students, and they'll be taking some of those classes in the high schools, and we're helping support that.
Part of our concurrent programs.
Yes, and trying to get additional students as well, besides the concurrent enrollment students. Are there any other questions that you have regarding the grants programs and the information that's there, since I pulled out a few things to highlight for you?
Do you want to continue on for interim role as Vice President for Academic Affairs?
I certainly will.
Okay.
Thank you. The other report that was asked for for this time of year is the Activity Report for the Center of Workforce Development and Innovation. And as a quick reminder, that area of our institution has four different areas that it serves. The first one is corporate training, the second is commercial driver's license or a CDL program, continuing education is the third, and then finally, college for kids. And what I want to do is just highlight a couple of pieces for each one of those areas and then entertain any potential questions that you have for that. But before jumping into that, I also would like to take this opportunity to introduce you to a couple of the leaders that really run this and is our representation across Northern Colorado. So Sheena Howell, if you could stand for us, please? She's the leader of that area, and then working with Dean Rob Abernathy, really put a lot of this information together, and then with their plan, matching up with our strategic plan, has done a phenomenal job in these four areas, making connections to our community and training workers and/or students, and some of those examples I'll give you. So thank you both for your hard work and your teams in that area. So for corporate training, basically what that is, is where we develop and deliver customized training solutions for partner companies, and over this six-month period, we've served seven companies through nine contracts, training 185 different individuals. We also, during that timeframe, administered four state training grants, which was approximately $90,000 in grant awards, serving four companies, Hexcel, UQM, Buress Optics, as well as Signature Stone. So again, great partners in terms of working with our community and training those incumbent workers. For our CDL, our Commercial Driver's License, to give you a little bit of background on that, we provide Class A, Class B, as well as, we do testing only, and then single classes offered, such as public defensive driving, truckers against trafficking, roadside inspections, and electronic log books, so some individual classes. So some highlights from these programs, the classes range anywhere from three weeks to a four-hour standalone course. Fees for the three-hour program to do your CDL range anywhere from just over $4,100, but then we do have some partnerships with WE and others that provide scholarships for those students. And one of the things to highlight is, in many parts of the country, Colorado isn't any different, the CDL or truck driving is the number-two-needed occupation in this state. So one of the things, and why this area is so important, is again, meeting that employment needs of the area, and our teams are doing a lot in terms of helping meet those needs. So over that timeframe we've talked about, we've had 64 individuals trained, which is a 30% increase from the previous six months. Other piece, as we move forward, we are doing new trucks, kind of leased to own, as well as some trailers, and doing some Ames branding to that, too, so when you see that, you'll be proud of how we're representing the institution. Future plans include an expanded training lot at the Fort Lupton campus, and just doing a lot in that area to highlight CDL and those opportunities. Before I jump into the last two, the continuing ed and the college for kids, I'll take a breath and see if you have any questions regarding either our corporate training or our CDL.
Anybody?
Nope. All right.
Okay.
So for continuing ed, really that's an area that we're trying to revitalize and have had a recent hire in the last few months, and we have a new slate of classes that will be starting later this spring. The catalog is currently online, and the printed catalog will be available shortly. In the previous six months, we've had a total enrollment of over, or just under, 260 students. This spring, we'll have 38 non-credit courses that are now available on ames.edu, and as I mentioned, we'll have additional classes starting in March, and they'll be in different areas, like agriculture, business, computers, construction, engineering, healthcare, human services, EMS, so a large array of different opportunities for continuing education across our area, and really revitalizing that area of the institution, again, to reach out. And as you remember, from the state demographer that shared some information about the population that we're serving in Northern Colorado, you know, not only are, and we've had a conversation about our traditional college-age four-credit programs, this is an opportunity where we're looking at that other demographic and serving all ages of our communities and looking at how we can best serve those young-at-heart adults as well. My Disney term of, you know, how you properly, all right.
We are less young.
Moving on, Russ. All right. So, college for kids, and you've all are aware of this as well, but it's a three-week summer community outreach program, which introduces children ages nine to 12 to the community college environment, and around programs like agriculture, farm-to-table, or communications media, had the Lights, Camera, Action Program. Last year, they served 349 students, which was a 42% increase from the previous year, and 40 scholarships were given to those students, and the fee that they had charged was, what, $75? And always looking at mitigating the cost and trying to provide those opportunities for scholarships for those students. for scholarships for those students. Our goal for 2019 is to serve 400 students, including children with disabilities, and increase scholarships through a collaboration with District Six. Our 2019 dates, and we're looking at Greeley, Loveland, and Fort Lupton. So in June, the 10th through the 13th in Greeley, and Loveland, June 17th through the 20th, and also Fort Lupton, June 20th through the 27th. And this is information that I have a hard copy and I can get to electronically, too, and you'll be seeing a lot more information regarding these programs as we promote them. Any questions? Yes, sir?
Go ahead, Ray. Do you have one?
No, I was talking to you. I was motioning to you.
Can I drift back a little bit?
Absolutely.
Has our CDL programs kind of increased? Are they on the upswing as far as training and things like that?
Yes. I think we had a 29%, well, 30% increase of the individuals trained and then a 29% increase in the revenue that we're generating from that area. And with the increased trucks and then moving to Fort Lupton with additional room, we'll be able to continue to increase those numbers.
Now, is there any interest, since that's kind of on a duct tape and kind of go hand-in-hand, diesel mechanics? Thought?
Rob, Jeff.
Yes, our light diesel mechanic program is growing in the outload center at Windsor, but we're looking forward to not just with the CDL, but we can get some heavy equipment operations, training going, Fort Lupton, bulldozers, dump trucks, all of that. We already work in partnership with the manufacturing, Colorado manufacturing outfit to do work at Fort Lupton during the summer. So yeah, that's an area where we're looking to expand.
As far as training operation is, what you're talking about?
Correct.
What about the maintenance on those type of vehicles and like kind of the...
If Fred Brown were here today, he would tell you that that was something he would love to be able to get into, is the heavy diesel maintenance portion of that.
Seems like our Denver region would be a good draw as well.
There is lots of empty dirt on the Fort Lupton campus to move around.
They can play sandbox all day long.
The programs we've had down there in the past, they just had a wonderful time. They moved the dirt, they put it back, they moved the dirt. Great fun to watch them.
Russ, do you have a breakdown on ethnic, my God, what am I trying to say? Ethnic breakdown on the early college that we've, what?
Participation.
Participation.
The college for kids?
Yeah.
I don't have it with me, but I can certainly provide that to you.
Yeah, we have a report from last year, and it was 29% coming from Hispanic community, and most of those scholarships went to those neighborhoods. And we also worked with District Six and provided transportation, and so those students were picked up and brought to the kids with District Six people doing that. So we also will expand that this year. So we do have a report that really breaks that out that we shared out with you on last year's college kids.
Did you say 29%?
Twenty-nine percent, and so 20% of it was Hispanic and others were other 90%.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Next.
Moving on, on the agenda, I had room for a quick hemp update. And just as a reminder, I think it was shared with you previously, that in May 2018, Ames Community College completed a feasibility study for hemp production program as part of the current agricultural sciences and technology area. And what was identified in there was a multi-phase approach to a potential hemp production degree. And where we currently are with that is we're in the phase of developing a set of certificates that would be embedded into the current agricultural production program. And what we're currently offering are two non-credit courses. Currently, we're looking at doing two in the summer and the two in the fall. And then that team will analyze those, the participation, interest, and success of those non-credit, and if it makes sense to move those over to credit courses. And then they've already been working and being very much supported by CSU Pueblo to do articulation agreements should we move into that credit round for the certificates. And if we do that and those certificates are successful, then we would look at a potential degree program that would articulate. But certainly with our four-credit courses that we build into certificates as part of what we're currently doing, we could get those to articulate into CSU Pueblo. And from the farm bill pass, bill passing and hemp being kind of off that list of, there's a lot of interest in the representation that Jeff Smith, the dean, and Amy McFarland, the faculty members, and others that have had at different conferences and things, that there is a lot of interest in specifically what Ames is doing in this area and kind of leading on those conversations. So again, following that information from the feasibility study and analyzing what makes the most sense in terms of moving forward. Two quick pieces about that before any questions. You may have seen through social media or in other avenues, but the East Colorado SBDC or Small Business Development Center in Ames Community College is offering a harnessing hemp course, February 8th and 9th, so this Friday and Saturday, as part of their leading-edge strategic planning series that delivers training to small businesses. And then in March 19th through the 23rd, Ames Continuing Education Course, the evolving world of hemp will meet on Tuesdays from 6:00 to 8:00 at the Fort Lupton campus.
And did you say that Ames is doing that workshop? Is that what you said?
Yeah, and partnering with the East Colorado SBDC.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Go ahead.
Just to follow up on Dr. Rothmer's statements about hemp, and we know this already, but just to say it publicly, is Colorado as a state in our current legislature are also looking at the hemp industry and manufacturing of hemp as a significant area for the state in the future. So the work that's being done by Ames right now is extremely valuable, and we are very much under the spotlight with regard to this, which is wonderful. So publicly applaud all the work that everyone has done and continues to do, and I see Jeff, because I know you've been, you've been working on this for a few years, so I really appreciate all the research and legwork you've been doing. And it looks like we will be in the lead on this, so that's pretty exciting. So thank you.
That was my question. That was my question. Are we on the leading edge of this, or is there other institutions doing the same thing? Jeff, did you want to address the...
So right now, we're the only community college in Colorado. CSU Fort Collins, CSU Pueblo have been having programs for a while, institute and research. CSU Pueblo has been in the nation for about 10 years.
Super.
Wow.
Thanks, Jeff.
And we'll only articulate to Pueblo? Is that what you said?
Well, as Jeff mentioned, they're the ones that have been doing it for the last decade that are leading, but certainly any other institutions that have the kind of those programs where it makes sense to articulate, we would look at those opportunities as well.
Yeah, okay.
Yes. So I have two other very quick things. One is an update from a previous update I gave you at your retreat regarding our strategic plan initiative around our PTEC initiative in St. Braine. As I learned my Colorado geography and get more understanding of the details of some of our programs, wanted to highlight for you kind of where that PTEC initiative kind of sprung from and kind of where we're going. So we were actually approached by St. Braine Valley School District in the spring, asking to partner for a PTEC. And in particular, what they were wanting us to partner with is Frederick High School, which is actually in our service district.
No, it's not.
Okay, so I'll go back and check my geography, but I think, I will check that. Verify. So I'll come back again with information.
Sorry, no, the St. Braine School District is not in our service area. The Thompson School District is. But I don't think the Frederick School District is. That's actually, St. Braine is a Boulder County School District.
Okay.
Although a lot of it's in Weld County, but it basically, it is a Boulder County School District. So I don't...
It's not in our taxing district.
It's not in our taxing district, and I don't believe that it's in our service area either. I don't believe so.
So I know you have more of an update on that, because I remember that with the board retreat, the question was, how was, how did we get involved in that? And I think the response that you also had that you were following up on is that their school district contacted us for some assistance.
Correct, yeah, because they also worked with Fort Collins and, well, in Front Range on a different one with some of their other institutions and had a PTEC history, but given our experience in the biosciences and those areas, that's why they looked to us for that. And I will verify that other piece as well.
We're certainly physically closer. It feels like we're closer to them, just because of the location of Frederick.
Not Pearl Street.
No, not Pearl Street.
Then I'm gonna end on a piece of good news as opposed to my geography understanding. Wanted to highlight this past weekend was the opening weekend of our Ames Community College and Tax Help Colorado, offering free tax preparation. And we will be, it started February 2nd, and will go through April 13th on the Greeley Campus on Saturdays. It will be in the Fort Lupton Campus on Fridays, February 8th through March 1st. And then the Loveland Campus is a test for February 15th and 22nd. But the piece I wanted to highlight for you is that in this opening weekend, it was, we had the highest number ever. We had over 145 returns. And another very impressive point is we had 35 volunteers for that. So thank you to Gina Jones and all those teams for doing that.
I have a question on that, if I may.
Yes, go ahead.
Where do we stand on, from a liability standpoint on that? If we're, have volunteers coming in, and let's say if there's errors, how do we handle those? Are we liable in any way for any of that, or?
I know there's an answer to it, I just don't have it at the tip of my tongue, and I don't know, Jeff, if you know that?
Yeah, so all the volunteers are required to go through IR certification and, you know, all these things. And so all all of the volunteers become IR certified.
Okay.
So they're all volunteering for us, can hire us.
Okay.
So it goes back to them.
Okay. Thanks, Jeff. Thank you. And thank you.
What?
Yeah, oh, thrown away.
One more question.
All right.
I love the numbers. This is your book, right? Kind of?
What you have in front of you here, this hot off the press from Timothy in CCR.
Oh, is this Tim's?
That's good.
Yeah, this, this is going to be for the next six months as our annual report. So, yes.
I like it.
Yes, so we will have our next annual report in August, and our 17-18 annual report kind of fell through the cracks a little bit, so here's our annual report for the next six months.
Next six months. But we had an increase in concurrent enrollment in 18, didn't we?
Yes, that would be.
But this is 17.
That's 17-18. It's the academic year, it's last year.
So it's last year, last year's number.
And we're still seeing an increase in that area as well.
Yeah, okay. I'd get to raise my number 2%.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Jensen, would you like to give us an update from Administrative Services and our monthly budget update as well, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Bornstein. You have before you the budget report as of December 31st, 2018. I'll do a couple of quick highlights on the budget, and I do have a couple of division updates to follow. As we look at the budget report for December 31st, I'll highlight on our tuition lines, even though this is as of the end of December at this point, because that was five weeks ago, we're looking at overall, our tuition will probably be up about 3% for the year. We'll probably, we'll probably exceed our budget by about $300,000 in tuition for the year. So I'm at that point of the year now where I can start making some fiscal year-end predictions of where we're going to come in, in June 30th. So tuition continues to be strong. I also would say that about our fees, primarily to some strong enrollments in aviation, we're seeing additional fee revenue coming in from that program. And as always, our state appropriation will come in as anticipated at a little over $10 million. We don't anticipate any changes or adjustments to that as we go to the fiscal year-end. As I reported at the December meeting, when we certified our mill levy for the next year or for this year, we do anticipate that we'll be collecting probably about $7 million more in general fund or general property taxes, so we'll see an increase in that as we move through the fiscal year and the fiscal year, very strong in our local mill levies. And as always, as I always love to point out, on the other revenue, which was missed by a lot because of the fact of our oil revenues, we continue to see strong income from our oil royalties on the wells that were drilled about a year ago. So overall, the revenue picture continues to be very strong. I feel we'll end the fiscal year above our budget by several million, and so that's a good picture. And questions as, please just interrupt me as we go along here. On the expenditure side of the picture, again, I have nothing to alert the board as to any issues that I'm concerned with. Everyone continues to be on track on their budgets, and I have no concerns to report to the board on the expenditure side of the house. So again, as I get to stand before you most months, or every month, actually, we continue to have a very strong, stable financial position going forward, and I don't anticipate any issues taking us into the fiscal year-end. So that's my budget update.
Super. Very good.
Okay. A couple of quick updates from the division. I'll highlight a couple of facilities projects, just to keep the board apprised of where we're at on some of the major projects on all of our campuses. In our Fort Lupton Campus, the welding project has begun, and we continue to anticipate completion and occupancy for fall of '19 in our welding areas on the Fort Lupton Campus. Again, we're continuing to coordinate with workforce development on exploring the CDL lot and what that would mean for the Fort Lupton Campus also. At our Loveland Airport property, we are mobilizing down there, and construction will begin. And again, we continue to anticipate that we'll occupy that building by late May, early June, so that the program will be ready for next fall, fall of 2019. So again, very, moving along nicely there. Loveland Campus exterior, that project is now complete. We updated the bathrooms or break, and the exterior is completed. So Loveland exterior and interior project is pretty much wrapped up. At our Windsor Campus, we opened a bistro, or not a bistro, but a food service in our Windsor Campus, a coffee shop, a grab-and-go kind of facility in the main building there at PSI. We also had over, right after the break, we had our new data center delivered, which sits behind Cornerstone. You may have noticed that big chunk of concrete that sits behind Cornerstone, that is our new IT data center. And we'll be moving that, that transition will begin here as we go through the winter here, and we anticipate to occupy that in the spring, having relocated our data center into that facility, which is a very good project. One of the other updates, third floor ATTC, we're continuing to move in that direction. We can anticipate our permits to be issued the 1st of March, and again, we're still anticipating occupancy for fall of 2019. As you can tell, we're very busy, many projects. And to round out where we're at on our facilities planning steering committee, we are in our second round of interviews for architects this Friday. We've narrowed it down to two architects, who we've invited back for continued presentations, and then from that, we will make a selection. Hopefully, by the middle of February, we'll have an architect named, and then we'll begin the process of designing our renovations for the college center and our student center, welcome center building. So that project is moving forward and very exciting.
Chuck, the third floor, is that just going to be primary classroom space or large? What's that going to be?
It will support their construction management program. Jeff, maybe you could speak specifically to the academic programs that will go in there.
So two large classrooms and then eight labs downstairs for industrial technology accessible downstairs, because we're moving trades in to the first floor.
Okay. In that, where the overhead doors are in that area? Okay. Thank you.
Other questions on facilities?
Okay. On the airport transfer of operations over to the, to the new facility, will that be something that just happens like over a weekend or something, or will that be a gradual transition? How will that work?
That's, that's why we're planning for having the project completed by early spring, so we then have the summer to transition. That's been our, that's been our goal, to have that timeframe. So we're not finishing completion in the end of June or July and then having to scramble to transfer planes and get accustomed to... to transfer planes and get accustomed to the new space. So, that's, that's why we set our goal for early May to be able to have the project done, so it gives the academic program the time to transition.
Okay. Thanks.
Any hypotheticals on the old space?
Nope.
Okay.
Chuck, on the concrete block that's west of Cornerstone, is that just machinery or does Brad end up over there?
It's a, yes, it's a windowless, it's a bunker type facility. So no, there'll be no staffing in there. That's where all of our servers move, all the, all the main functionality, all the servers and, I'm using really non-IT talk here, Brad could probably talk.
Yeah, I understand.
But no, it's, it's racks of computers and lights that blink and, and, again, it's, and I, I'm adding a little bit of humor to that, but it, it really prepares us to having a very secure facility that houses our nerve center. You know, it's climate controlled, it's, it's got its own generator. I mean, it's one of those facilities that, you know, if something were to happen to Cornerstone, if we were to have a systems malfunction in Cornerstone, this center can still operate on its own, and it's completely independent on its own systems and stuff. So, it really is the, kind of the cutting edge of maintaining an IT data center on a campus. So we're very excited about it. Brad's had inquiries from other campuses, looking at what we're doing, because there's a high degree of interest in what this means.
Great.
Other facility questions, I'll?
Anything else, anybody?
I'll wrap up, I'll wrap up with just a commentary that I started with the board in December regarding our ERP system, which is our banner system, which is our administrative system for fiscal, HR, and student. As we all recall, our banner system is a legacy system. It's approximately 20 years old, and it's 20-year-old technology. So we're beginning the process now of assessing our needs, looking at what's available out on the market, the new technologies that are being developed in this arena around the nation. And so at the December meeting, I had mentioned that we're taking the first step in looking to hiring a consultant to come in and help us with this initial assessment. We have now hired that consultant, and they'll begin their process here in the next number of weeks, helping us assess our needs and evaluating what could be some potential options for us going forward with this type of a transition to a new ERP. So, again, another very exciting project that perhaps we'll be taking a look at. That is the points that I had to make for the board. Other questions that I could answer?
Yes, you're good.
Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chuck.
I think we now, no, maybe, maybe, no, maybe? Okay. Timothy is going to join us from 40,000 feet above the earth.
Well, good afternoon, Board of Trustees members. I want to thank Dr. Bornstein for allowing me to do my presentation in this way. As we speak, I'm about 40,000 feet above the United States, headed to Washington DC. I'm headed there, I'm going to be going to the higher education, the new Congress, which meets on Thursday, and we're meeting with some senators and some representatives to understand with this new Congress, what are they thinking with regards to higher education and the direction forward? And then beginning this weekend, I will be attending with some of you Board, Board Trustee members, the National Legislative Summit. And I look forward to being there with you in DC, attending the sessions, but also having the opportunity to meet with some of our senators and representatives as we go along there. Just a couple of things to let you know what's going on in CCR. And first of all, this is kind of our recruiting and competition season. Right now, the admissions team has got 58 tours scheduled, campus tours, from now through the end of May. At the Windsor campus, last Friday, they had the Career Academy and had approximately 40, a little over 40 prospective students, and it went very, very well. Coming this Thursday, on the 14th, is going to be a Skills USA competition. As you remember, this is a federally recognized competition, and Ames has done extremely well in the years past in being multiple, multiple award winners. So, we're looking forward to great things from them and just supporting them as they go forward. Over in Fort Lupton, I feel like, I feel like a news anchor here. Over in Fort Lupton, on the, March 19th, is going to be Ag Day, and really looking forward to that, it's going to be just a fantastic day. It's a big day for recruiting, for agriculture. That program led by Amy McFarland, it brings in a wide section of the community, and it's a lot of hands-on events there and is very, very popular, so we look forward to that and good things coming there, and hopefully a very good return on investment with more students coming into our ag program. A little closer to home over Loveland, this coming Friday and Saturday is the Sweetheart Festival. Ames will be out there. They're going to be, they're literally, the campus is right in the thick of everything that's going to be happening, with the laser light show, all kinds of other fun things going on. But Ames will be out there promoting all of the great programs that we offer. So, please plan to make an opportunity to be out there and enjoy that. Again, that's this Friday and Saturday, kind of all day. And then finally, and pardon me, I'm reading from my notes here, the 2017-2018 annual is ready for your review, and I think Kelly Jackson is going to be handing those out to you as, as I speak here. It highlights many of the great things Ames is doing for the students and has accomplished in, within the community for this last year. So, a lot of great things happening in CCR, and highlighted a lot of those last week at the Board of Trustees Retreat, and for grateful opportunity to be there. As I've done in the past, if I could give you kind of a to-do list. So the first thing is, is if at all possible, please attend the Loveland Sweetheart Festival this weekend. Secondly, talk with Jody, and who's over in the CCR office, and see about attending one of our campus tours. It'd be good to get exposed to that, to kind of see what happens from the student experience, prospective student experience, and that, that way you can kind of hopefully promote that as well in your, in your severs of influence. And finally, Ag Day, March 19th. So if you can put that on your calendar and come and just enjoy, it's just a wonderful day, a wonderful event. Again, thank you for the opportunity to report this way. I look forward to seeing you in about a month. Take care.
Kelly, is there anything that you want to follow up on with regard to CCR and Timothy's presentation? No? Okay. Any questions that we may or may not be able to respond to?
Good piece.
Okay. Questions, comments? Anybody?
Okay. Then I would like to ask Dr. Weisgiver to come up and report out on the SAES Division, the Student Engagement Inclusion and Success Report, and specifically on the Artie's Pantry Expansion.
Good afternoon, Board of Trustees, Dr. Bornstein. It's exciting that we're getting some snow. I know all of us in Colorado are feeling really good about that, and I was excited to see the number of students that are on campus today despite the snow, for some really exciting programming that we had. As I like to do, I start out each one of these kind of presentations with the 6-1-1 rather than the 4-1-1, on what's happening in the SAES Division. So students are moving to really the meat of the semester. They've got over those first few weeks, and now they're really starting to get in and understand what their courses, what, what that's going to entail. From a student inclusion side, programming is in full swing, as you saw in the score calendar, we have over 70 unique dates for students to participate on all four campuses. And so that's really designed to help students learn how to connect to resources. You saw a lot of those were probably eye-focused, teaching them how to connect to resources, how to really help their study skills, those sorts of pieces. But it also teaches them to connect to one another and to connect to the institution. So, that's, that's the haps in the SAES Division, and so I'm really excited to share that with you. As far as Artie's Pantry, we have some magic workers over here. Thanks, thanks, friends. I'd like to share with you some movement that we have in Artie's Pantry that I'd like to, to run by you. So, background and context, you all will remember that not this last December, but the, or December prior to that, Sale had created a task force to discuss this pilot program of Artie's Pantry. In BOT 2000, I think I have a typo there, 17, we started Artie's Pantry and really wanted to see what this looked like. What does it look like to provide support for our students who are hungry on campus? We had a donation drive in the following February where we had an estimated 300 pounds of food. There it is. Beautiful picture. And then the following, then we had, then we, if we fast forward to November, we had another food drive where we had 1,500 pounds of food donated.
Maybe it's, maybe it's, 300 or 1,500, nowhere.
The following, the following slide gives you a little bit of a chart showing you what the highest usage months are. We see that September and October were the highest months' usage. We had 119 visits, 129 visits. In total, we had 614 visits in the pantry between March and December 18.
Are those unduplicated?
Those are not unduplicated. So those are visits. So, what our data will tell us as we get a little bit further in, Trustee Howe, is that we have students, around 200 students, who use the pantry pretty frequently. So that tells me that there's a significant need. If we look at the enrollment status of users, we see that the majority really are, or the larger majority is full-time. We have some at three-quarter time, about 30%, and then about 22% that are under that. So you can see a little bit, this is pretty spread out in a nice way, that shows me that the students who are here longer are taking advantage of the pantry. So I think this is definitely helps there. From a program breakdown, the majority of our students who are using the pantry are Associate of Arts degree students. So these are our two-year degrees, Associate of Applied Science, Associate of General Studies, that's where we're seeing the largest numbers. So the students who are really here longer, not necessarily our certificate students, are the students who are utilizing the pantry more often. The gender breakdown, I'm sorry?
3.5%. 200 is 3.5.
Yes. So the, the gender breakdown, predominantly women who are utilizing the pantry as opposed to men. I would suspect, and I haven't done the research on this, but I would suspect if we look nationally, this is probably a common trend when we look at gender breakdown and utilizing these types of services. The ethnicity breakdown shows that we're really at about 50-50% of our Latinx students, and our students who identify as white, Caucasian are the dominant race or ethnicity. And so to me, that again supports a strong need for the pantry. So that brings me to the exciting piece, and that is where the Sale office has worked to put together what they see as a way for us to move forward with the pantry. The Board of Trustees, several months ago, asked, "When are we getting this on the outlying campus? Come on, Sarah, when are we getting this on the outlying campus?" And I'm really excited to share with you that we'll be moving in that direction. This slide here shares with you a little bit, and you can read those details if you like, just where some of the responsibilities will lie, the oversight of those pieces in terms of how the pantry will support the outlying campuses, how Greeley will support the outlying campuses. But also, one point that I would, I would really like to point out here is that any donations that are received on those outlying campuses will remain for the students to use on those outlying campuses. And I know that was a concern to some folks, saying, "Well, if I donate, if I make a donation at Windsor, my intent is that that food go to the students in Windsor. If I make a donation in Fort Lupton, I, my intent is that the students in Fort Lupton have those resources." And that is certainly within the bounds of what will be happening. So where are you going to find the next Artie's Pantries? You will find them in the Fort Lupton, on the Fort Lupton campus in the previous bookstore, so right up front, where students will have great access to utilizing this. In Fort Lupton, or in Loveland, we'll also be using the bookstore area. And Windsor, we're looking at more of a cabinet facility in the PSI building to house the resources there. For folks who are wondering, I think in our, I'm not sure if it was last week when we met for your retreat or December meeting, there was a question about, you know, how, how do we make some donation drives? And I'm very happy to share with you that Kelly Jackson confirmed for me today that our employee donation drive will kick off next week, and employees and folks will have the opportunity, so shout out to all of you, will have the opportunity to, to indicate that you'd like your donation to go directly to the pantry. And so we're really excited to see this grow. We're really excited to better be able to serve our students across all campuses versus just the, the time spent here on the Greeley campus. And we really value the time that we had on the Greeley campus to work out some of the bugs that inevitably come up anytime you pilot something new. We'll be rolling this out, like I said, in summer with a full launch in fall.
Experience-wise, have you had times where the pantry hasn't had enough to support?
No.
It's always been enough, plenty?
We've always, we've always had plenty. So far, I have some additional data. So far, we have about $4,500 worth of donations in terms of the most popular items, things like ramen noodles, snacks, cans of chili, cans of chicken, tuna and crackers, so some of those high-protein items, as well as toiletries, toilet paper, hygiene items, those sorts of things. One thing I know I do is, and I got this idea from Dr. Bornstein, when I travel, I snag every day, I snag all of their travel size shampoo and conditioner and all of those things every day, and I take them back and get, I give them to the pantry, because that's a great way for students to divvy out those, those sorts of things. But no, up to this point, we, we have found that this community, unsurprisingly, not surprisingly, is incredibly supportive of our students who have food insecurity.
I'll bet you grab the soap out of the hotel rooms, don't you?
Every time. Every time. Everything that they have. Even their, even their deluxe facial items, which consist of Q-tips and cotton balls, but yes, every time.
You, you said, I think when we were talking, when you were talking about the male-female division, that that's probably would be consistent nationwide. Is there any comparison? I mean, are we the only campus in the world that provides a pantry like this, or are there?
No, we are, we are actually on the, the lagging edge of this, to be fully transparent with you. We are on the lagging edge of this, and so I can certainly look into the data and see if other campuses would be willing to share maybe some of those demographic breakdowns. We can certainly do that.
Yeah, I think that'd be interesting.
Yeah, yeah, I'm happy to provide that for you.
See, you know, just comparing what happens in other campuses.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes.
Yes, and Trustee Howe kind of hit on what I was going to ask, but making sure that you have enough. And, but, so in, in line with that, would you prefer cash donations so that, I assume you track, I heard you say which, what are the most popular items? So then, do you go shop and stock based on what's most popular, so you don't depend on people donating the most popular? Is that accurate statement?
That is accurate.
Okay, so you would prefer cash than in these donations? Makes it easier?
Yeah, cash is a great option, because what it does is it allows us to have some variety and track where the need is. It also helps us, I think, a lot of times, and I know I, in my experience, I oftentimes find myself looking through my pantry and going, "Well, I'm not going to eat this, and I'm not going to eat that, and I'm not going to eat this." One of the things that we have to do is go through and double-check that all the food items are not expired. And so oftentimes, what happens is we personally, in our own lives, are cleaning out our pantries, is we're inadvertently giving expired food items. And so cash is a nice option, because there's a longer shelf life for those.
How does, how do, how do you receive those sums? Is that through the foundation, or is that through?
Through the foundation.
Through the foundation?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
So if we donate cash and we want, say, I want to give $100, can I designate a third of it go to each place? Will you split it up like that?
Sure.
Kelly shaking her head, yes?
Kelly.
Kelly says yes. And we'll listen to Kelly.
I'll answer Kelly, thanks.
Yes. Other questions about the pantry?
You probably, you probably explained this before and I didn't catch it, is there a limitation on how many times somebody can re- Is there a limitation on how many times somebody can return to the kitchen on a monthly basis, or is it just there, whatever your need is?
So where we started the pilot was, students were available to receive up to five items twice a week. And so that's why we see some of those repeat customers, because, and a lot, and, you know, other things we're stocking are things like diapers and school supplies, you know, to help the students themselves, but also those that they're responsible for.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
And it's still five items twice a week?
Mm-hmm. I believe so, yes. Okay. Just a couple of quick highlights for you, and I think you'll be really excited to hear. So advising numbers. We opened registration October 22nd, and our drop deadline was January 30th. So in that time period, we were registering students. We had 2,900 visits to academic advising, and 2,400 of those were unique students. So earlier, Trustee Howe, you asked about, were those duplicated headcounts? To some extent, they are duplicated, but the large majority are unduplicated. So big shout-out to our advising staff and our enrollment staff and financial aid staff for the volume of students. They saw, one thing that we've been working on a lot, and I attribute the great success of this to our AVP, Libby Klingsmith, who's been, this has been a problem she has been working since day one, is how do we reduce that line? How do we make this not feel like a DMV? And she's done a beautiful job. This last spring semester, we all walked in and thought something was wrong because there was no line. And then we were checking the data and went, "Oh, the data are actually in line with where we were." And so what that tells me is our service continues to improve. So great, great work to those folks. On the financial aid side, I'm very happy to share with you, February, not only is it Black History Month, not only is it Valentine's Day, but it's also National Financial Aid Awareness Month. And so the national financial aid folks have asked schools to come up with different campaigns to help share information about financial aid and raise awareness. And so on the Ames campus, we're doing a pilot where students have the opportunity to fill out a six-question quiz, which requires them to go to the financial aid website and be entered for a drawing. So they get entered for a drawing of $100. And so 20 students will get $100 scholarship applied to their financial aid bill at random for, as a result of filling out this quiz. So that's really exciting, some fun stuff that encourages students to do some self-education around financial aid and making sure that they're, they know, they know what it is that they're getting into as they move down that path. We awarded 5.9 million so far this spring semester, and that's just a snapshot in time. We're still moving toward awarding. We have another set of loans that will come out later in the semester, about halfway through the semester. And as we start to shake out a little bit, we'll go back through and see still which students have unmet need and apply more institutional grant funds to those students. So, but I think in total for this academic year right now, we've awarded 12.5 million to our students. And that includes, right, our grants, our scholarships, and loans. So, nice work, financial aid team.
12.9 million so far.
Questions in your bag?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and it looks like I'm last. Okay, so you have the President, the Brief President's Report in front of you with meetings of note for December and January. That's certainly not an exhausted list, but highlighted meetings that aren't typically occurring on a regular basis. So if you have any questions about that, I can certainly respond. Otherwise, I'd love to shout out a couple of acknowledgements at the bottom of that page that you all have, but I would love to say them publicly for the record. I'm sure you have, whoa. That's okay. I'm sure you have heard that Fort Lepton Chamber Business of the Year awarded and recognized the Fort Lepton Campus of Ames as their Business of the Year, so we're very proud of that. Julie, 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 Julie. There you go. I would also like to mention that I think this is maybe the second or third, I think third year in a row, that the Paragon Awards, that are national awards for communication and public information, have identified two Ames projects that are up for recognition at their March conference. We're not sure if we'll be receiving gold, silver, or bronze awards for those, but they are the, the emergency procedure quick reference guide. And the beat goes on, 50th Anniversary Gala Program. So we're, we're still, yes, I see some nods. We're still being recognized for all the wonderful events that we do every, every day, but also certainly for that 50th year, which was outstanding. So more to come on that as we learn what awards, I'm going to just make the assumption, what awards we will receive. And then finally, our, our testing center has been awarded the National College Testing Association Certification, which is valid for five years, and they're very excited and very proud of that. And yes, Sarah's clapping. And so we want to recognize them for all their hard work in putting the data and information together in order to be certified and recognized in that way. So I wanted to make sure that they were recognized. Any questions about that president's?
I just wonder, you say gold, silver, bronze. Are there just three projects?
There are, there are two projects that we have, that they're looking at, and we would receive gold, silver, or bronze for each.
Each one.
An award will be given for each of them. We're just not sure if it's gold, silver, or bronze.
All right. So we, we will get a reward?
We will get a reward, yes.
Okay.
And we will find out in March. So this is sort of a precursor to that. The next page, you'll see the employee report, and you'll see folks, new hires. And we would love to spend a moment, I know Dr. Rothmar already did, but we may do it again. So if you have a new employee in the audience, would you please raise your hand so you can introduce them? Ooh, look, ooh, look at that. I can't actually see who is there. So, let's start in the back. There you go. I couldn't see who it was.
Actually, the advising is very proud and happy to welcome to our speaking, Clarida Verticon. Clarida will be working with our teams in our arts, social sciences, and design majors here on the Greeley campus. She's a native of Caracas, Venezuela. She's studied in the United States for the past 20 years. I have to read this.
Caracas.
She holds doctoral degree in education and human resource studies, a master's degree in languages, literature, and cultures and literature studies from the Colorado State University, and a bachelor's in Spanish and business from the University of Iowa. Her research focuses on the experiences of Latinas during the third year of her degree. She has experienced in the first generation, rolling through students, passing women of oppression, lack of role models, active education, and Latina educational experiences. She has over 10 years' experience teaching Spanish, culture, and PSL classes at large universities, including the Columbus International Base, Hays, the Big Press, and has grown up in Miami. She's received outstanding graduate students and best faculty awards, as well as nominations to be the best teacher. Clarida is excited to transition into her role and actually apply to the continuing of students for her representative background.
Welcome. Just to let you know, it's a little hard to hear up here, so you may feel like you're shouting, but please do.
I'd like to welcome Jane Hayes. I hate, I hate to call her that. Jane Hayes is our new enrollment advisor for the Fort Lepton campus. She started her education at Ames Community College with both an AAS degree in computer programming and an AA in liberal arts. She then transferred to the University of Northern Colorado, where she earned a bachelor's degree in community services, and then a master's degree in gerontology. She has two new daughters, one of whom will graduate from Ames at the end of this semester. She comes from a family of educators and knows how important an education is for everyone, whether it be learning auto repair skills, the career her husband successfully pursued, or earning an academic degree and transferring to a four-year university as she did. Having been employed by Ames previously, she knows the value of community college, and she is once again looking forward to the daily opportunity to assist Ames students with whatever they need in order to find success.
Welcome.
This is more of a mention than an introduction, but Christopher Shet comes to us from the city of Greeley. He's been with us about a month, but he is out working hard on.
Thank you.
Hi, I would like to introduce Emily Nodder to you. She is our new financial aid advisor for our community campus. She comes to us from UNC. We are thrilled to have her on our team. She's currently working on a master's degree in education leadership and is graduating in May. So very thrilled to have her. She is originally from Connecticut and may be a Panthers fan. She will be providing presentations to all of our high schools, as well as community partners, in serving students ever from county to municipal. Welcome, Emily.
Good afternoon. My name is Liz Schumleber, and I'm the director of the Trio Student Support Services STEM Program. And I'm happy to introduce Amber Quinn, who has just come on board in January 7th as our staff associate. So she will serve both the Trio SS STEM and the Trio SS STEM programs. And Amber relocated to Northern Colorado this last July, and previous to that, she actually spent about 12 years working for Nike Corporation in Cleveland, Oregon, as both an executive assistant and a project manager.
Hello. I have two new additions to our arts and sciences division. First, we have Rachel Washam. She is one of our new lab coordinators. Rachel's a Ames graduate, having earned an associate of science degree here of emphasis in biology. She's also earned her bachelor of science degree in microbiology from CSU, where she also gained some experience as a research lab assistant. And beyond school and work, Rachel's participated in global humanitarian service as part of missions to China, Ecuador, and Mexico. I don't know if any of you have had a chance to see our lab facilities in the alley health building, but they are terrific, and they are terrific because they are run so well. A lot of times, it's invisible work, but we're very much appreciative of that. And next, I'd like to introduce Lomina Roy. She comes to us from Williamsburg University in Pennsylvania, where she was an instructor in economics for two years. She has two master's degrees in economics, the first an MA from Jotifur University in India, and the second an MS from Purdue University. She's been recognized on three occasions with a Canna Certificate for distinguished teaching in macroeconomics. And I have heard no fewer than three comments since she started just this spring semester from faculty saying, "Well, a good job the search committee did to find her," and we're certainly glad that she found us as well.
Anyone else? So I must ask Rachel, last name Washam. Do you have a mom that's sitting beside you? Yes, okay. Welcome. That concludes, Rachel Washam is the daughter of Shauna Lee Washam. Shauna Lee, do you want to stand up so?
That's, yeah. Where's mom?
She's standing.
Mom's standing.
Mom's standing.
Okay, great.
So Chair Peterson, that concludes the president's report.
Okay, well, thank you very much. So, once again, that's great to hear about the great staff that we're recruiting and signing and so on, so. Correspondence, anything? Carrie? Yes. Oh, there is? Oh, okay, okay.
There's a letter in there basically thanking Ames for a wonderful education from Jessica Datticord, so that's just for you to read at your leisure.
Okay, sorry, I hadn't gone that far, I guess. Board calendar. Several things, whoops, jumped over to. Anything else, trustees, that needs to be put on that calendar?
You could add Ag Day, which is March 19th.
Shoot, that's right, absolutely, Ag Day. And don't we have a, an April board meeting?
Yeah, we're, I think Carrie was just putting out two months ahead of time, so there'll always be two months, and if you would like more time.
Okay, well, no, I jumped down to June, and I thought, okay, we missed something, so.
Yeah, and just note that that, our March meeting is the second Wednesday.
Yeah, the 13th.
That's right, okay, because we've got a conflict, wasn't it, with the?
I was traveling.
You're traveling?
Are we able to get the people that we wanted to be there?
I don't know. I haven't heard.
Wasn't there something going on with Fort Lepton?
The chamber lunch is the same day. I have not heard back. I don't know where we are with that.
Mark, you?
No, I'm good, I'm just jotting down.
Okay. Okay, January retreat follow-up. Anybody want to jump in and make any comments or anything? I, I would just start it off by saying that I think we really did a, it was, it was a great meeting. We got a lot of information. Demographic presentation that we had by the state demographics, demographer. Chemographer, that's it. Okay, well, something like that. That lady that talked to us, okay? Yeah, yeah, sure was. And Mark just said a really smart lady, and she really put a lot of information in front of us and, and talk about some eye-opening stuff. I, I was just amazed at the way she presented the statistics and just analyzed them ever which way that you could possibly think of, I think, and really, really fit well with what we're doing. The other thing that I would comment on is that we also had a guest for lunch, or a guest with us for lunch. We didn't have the guest for lunch. We had Dr. Feinstein from University of Oregon, Colorado. As he left, he said, well, he, he could just take a free lunch anytime. So I guess that's what got him there, was a free lunch. But it was a very interesting, to my way of thinking, real interesting conversations with him. And one of the things that I was really impressed with was his concern and commitment to increasing the ease and way that, that our students could transfer to UNC. I mean, he just really saw that, I got the impression, he really saw that as a, one of his goals as he leads the university. So it was great. Anybody else jump in there if you have a comment or?
Carol? Oh, on to Andy too, as well. You know, he, he's very. He's pretty, pretty, pretty laissez-faire that way. He, he mentioned, you know, about coagulating the, the boards possibly occasionally and, and introducing one another, because we are articulating quite well, and it might be something you would pursue, maybe not, I don't know.
Right, yeah, he did suggest.
But it'd be neat to know that. Also, at the board, at that, at the retreat, was the foundation members. Always like to see that integration, as well as Timothy's approach to that. He's, did a great job, and still did a great job. Still, our attorney gave us some review on ethics that, it was good, it was very informative.
Well, we do try to stay within the law. Well, we do try to stay within the law.
Yeah.
I would, I would echo what trustees, Howden, Peterson have said. On the demographer, I've heard her speak several times. She has incredible information. She always tries to tailor it to the group that she's speaking to, which I like, but it's, it's, it's nice to know that she's always available. So if any of you ever have any questions about anything, I've found her to be very receptive to inquiries about anything particular. She's just, as Dr. Peterson said, a wealth of information. She's incredible. She's been doing it for, I think she said 17 years or something like that, maybe more, but she's just a wealth of information. The presentation she gave us at the retreat is going to be made available to us, so if any of you that weren't there at the retreat would be interested in seeing what she did present us, I think that could be made available to you. I liked Dr. Feinstein being there and joining us. It's very obvious to me in listening to him and talking to him that he's very interested in collaboration with, with Ames Community College, as well as with School District Six and the other surrounding districts. I think that collaboration between our districts is, has taken on more, it's more aggressive, it's more participatory between everybody, and I think that's, that's huge for our education system as a whole, and I certainly appreciate it. The presentations that all of our staff made were incredible, as they always are. Appreciate all you being there, taking time out of your busy schedules to be there and to share with us, to present their information, and I remain convinced that we have the best and the brightest available here at Ames Community College, and I just want to thank you all for being there.
Very good.
Thank you.
And Dr. Rothmer, my apologies, you are correct that Frederick is indeed in our service area. It does extend to the Weld County line.
Right, okay.
Which puts part of Longmont, Erie, Frederick, and Firestone, as well as part of Brighton in our service area. Interesting opportunities.
It's just not in our taxing district.
Correct.
Isn't Firestone in the taxing district?
No, Firestone is not in the taxing district. Firestone is in the St. Brain.
Same with Dakota, isn't it?
The very southern, well, if you...
Now we're getting into...
Dakota is split, the southern part, way south, is in the RE8, the Fort Lupton School District, so that is in the taxing district, as is a little teeny corner of Broomefield County.
Right, and a little teeny corner of Morgan County.
Chair Peterson, I believe we have a map that shows our taxing district and our service area, and what we'll, what Carrie and I will do is we'll put it up under the resources tab in diligence so that we can refer to it when needed, so that that's there.
I thought it might be on the website, because I checked that the other day.
It is, I just Googled Ames and the, and the service area and ended up with the map.
Now, don't you raise any more controversy.
Got off the hook there.
Lyle, did you have another comment?
No, no, thank you very much.
Anybody else? Okay, then let's move right into action items and...
Distinguished fellow nomination.
What are we doing? Oh, I'm sorry, distinguished fellow nominations, I jumped ahead. Deadline February 28th. We do need, as I understand, someone from the board that will serve on a committee to decide who the nominee will be or who the recipient will be. And Lyle, you did that last year, as I recall.
Had a ball.
Want to have another ball?
Sure.
Okay, very good. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Okay, now, are we ready for Mr. Jensen?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Bornstein. You have before you action item, agenda item number 9A, proposed fiscal year 2019-20 tuition rates. As a reminder, every year at the February meeting, the board approves the tuition rates for the next academic year. And as, as we talked at the work session, our Ames in-district tuition continues to remain below state and regional and national competitors, comparators, and has remained unchanged since fiscal year 2011-12. Due to continued strong local support, the college is recommending no tuition increase for the fiscal year 2019-20 academic year. The one thing I am recommending is that the current tuition matrix contains 16 possible tuitions. I'm recommending that we reduce that to eight to make it simpler for students to understand. So as you can see, as presented in the action item, the difference between current and recommended, it's a little easier to read, and we've eliminated some of the cents, just to make it a little cleaner. And so those are some recommendations I'm making there. The impact of this, of reducing, actually reducing tuition in some instances, is about 29,500, and surprisingly, the bulk of that comes from removing the 36 cents from the in-district tuition. I mean, again, that's the bulk of our, bulk of our activity, and so, yes, 36 cents does add up.
Boy, I guess.
So the recommendation before the board is approval of this action item, and so I stand for any questions for the board.
Any questions, members?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the tuition recommendation.
Thank you, Carol. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Gene. Is there any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, no, that motion is carried.
On behalf of the students of Ames Community College, thank you.
Thanks, wonderful. Carrie?
Chair Peterson, trustees, we have action item 9B, which is the location of public board meeting notices. Per CRS 246402, the Board of Trustees will give full and timely notice to the public of any meeting at which adoption of any proposed policy or formal action will occur, or at which a quorum of board is expected to attend. The place for the posting of this notice will be designated annually at the board's first regular meeting, which is today, for the calendar year. Our recommendation of the location is Ames Community College President's Office, Ed Beatty Hall, room 103, 5401 West 20th Street, Greeley, Colorado. And as a side note, our agendas are also posted on all campuses and on our website.
Okay, members, you've heard the proposal, action item 9B. Is there a motion to approve it?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve action item 9B, specifically the location of public board meetings notices.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Carol, thank you, Lyle and Carol. Is there discussion? Okay, hearing none? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, that motion is carried.
Thank you.
I guess the board meeting location is also on the website, isn't it? Yeah, so, I mean, this wouldn't be the...
The location would be posted, too.
Right, this isn't the only place that would, anybody could find out when our meetings are, so, okay. Comments from board members? I'd like to, I'd like to ask Gene how his eye is doing. Gene had eye surgery.
And I apologize for having to miss the, the retreat, but I needed to attend my surgical procedure. I just couldn't see your way to get you. And it's healing rapidly.
Don't you take care of that yourself? I mean, aren't you the doctor or something?
But thank you.
Mark, you're chomping at the bit.
Okay, no, not, not really. Actually, I, I kind of went over at the beginning of late January, early February. I gave Carrie a couple of emails, and I said, what about Groundmark Day? I didn't know. We're going to do it every other year. But I had my suit, I had the outfit all ready, and I was ready to show up, Tinkerbell and all. And so I just went, it was a sad day, I had a little, but we'll work on it next year, right? Are we going to just not do it when it's on a Saturday or Sunday?
We'll find out and let you know.
Okay.
To be determined.
Unless Kelly, you have any response.
Well, we had it two years in a row, and that was kind of fun, and then I think it's always...
Then we didn't have it.
Kelly might have a response to that on Timothy's behalf.
This year, if you follow Facebook, you would see that Artie was out and about, and he did his big reveal on the 2nd via Facebook.
I would have been there.
You were there virtually.
Well, I know.
With it being on a weekend, it's harder for us to gather together, so we did it that way this year. Likely it may happen that way again next year.
Other notes of thanks on our remarkable status, I mean, because volunteerism is extremely important, and it's great to see staff and faculty self-aware about those needs, and whenever you can reach in and help a group that might need a little extra help or give a dollar or two, that's always important. The presentation by Eli was exceptional, and I, I thought of a question to ask him afterwards, because I have actually a student at, at North Range that's, yeah, that's, not North Range, Northridge, Northridge, that's working for us, and he wants to be a commercial pilot, and I'm going, I says, you got to go out and talk to, I need to talk to you, Rob, so, things like that. So that was very inspirational. About the grant, the $173,000 grant that we're continuing to support, you know, K-12 education in whatever way we can, I think that's very resourceful, whether it's a classroom or it's an extra advisement session, I'd, again, it's something that really makes me happy. It's nice to see a familiar face on the new higher ranks of Rich Hanks. I think that history is great to have back into the fold. Foundation Board President, whenever we can have a foundation member at any of our board meetings, it's always nice to see those faces. And you guys are remarkable. Thank you for your service and what you do, the staff, the faculty, President B, Dr. B, and all of you, thank you. Appreciate what you guys do. It's a lot of effort, I know.
You left out one thing that you and I did in December. Mark and I attended a governing board's training that CCHE put on down at the Denver Center for the Performing Arts, and it was certainly a very interesting day. There is a new legislative requirement that all college boards go through annual training, and I don't know any more specifics, except that the training we went to covered it. They said we were good, so we're good.
But we went through it again last week.
And again, kudos to Julie and the, and the Fort Lupton campus for the, the Chamber Award, and, and thanks to everyone from the college who, as soon as we found out about that, changed plans and, and showed up and came to the dinner. That was very nice, so thank you.
Thank you. Lyle, comments or...
Well, I certainly made most of my comments earlier, but trustee Howden had on it, I, excuse me, I particularly enjoyed having Eli here and talk about his experience, and I always enjoy hearing those because it's consistent. So I remember when I went through Ames a couple of years ago, when the college was getting started, and I remember how committed and how passionate our professors were to the extent that, and I'm not suggesting anyone do this, but to the extent that some of them worked for free, just to actually make sure that the college succeeded and that all of us students received our educations. It was absolutely amazing, and it's so good to know that that commitment and compassion and passionate commitment, if you will, continues today, and I just love hearing that. So thank you all again.
I, I would also echo the comments about the excellence of our staff. I just think it's wonderful, it's great, and I want to send a particular kudos to the public relations people. I, I mean, if I pick up the Tribune and find out there's not an article in there about Ames, I think something's wrong. I mean, I just, it's just every day, and I just think that's great, the way that, that coverage is, is being done. Secondly, I guess, or finally, I'd make a reminder, I suppose you all have received your tax notices recently, and in there was a little notice about opportunity scholarships or what is it, what is it?
Bright Futures.
Bright Futures, that's it, Bright Futures. And I sure think that's a good way to maybe make a little difference on your, your tax bill. I'm sure going to do it, and I hope lots of others will as well. How'd we do as a board, folks? Any comments? I mean, other than the chair?
Nobody's done it better.
What's that?
Nobody's done it better.
Yeah, well, that's probably true.
And we are ahead of deadline, so that's good, too.
Yeah, right.
Very efficient, thank you.
I think we're going to get out of here before the storm hits, or before it blows over, or whatever, so. Okay, any further business before the, before the board? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Lyle. Anybody want a second there?
Seconding it.
Thank you, Gene. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion is carried. We'll see you next month.